All right, uh, very good. Let's call the meeting to order, please.
Adequate notice that this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by advertising the annual meeting notice on the official to the official newspapers, providing a copy of the agenda to the newspapers and posting a copy of the agenda for all.
Thank you very much. Could I have a roll call, please?
Wire?
Here.
Dougherty? Burr?
Yes, here.
Howard? Meyer?
Here.
Ready? Here. Tomco? Branson?
Here.
Uh, Denblyer?
Here.
Echo?
Here. Uh, and I do want it noted that Dougherty Howard and Tomco all let us know that they could not make it um this evening for various reasons. Uh, moving on to the approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes?
I'm moving them.
Thank you, Jean. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brad. If there's no comment or corrections. Could I have a vote, please?
Wire?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Ready? Yes. Branson?
Yes.
Denblyer?
Yes.
Echo?
Yes. Uh, moving on to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where uh, the public can uh speak to the planning board on items not on this evening's agenda. We have one person here in um, in the public this evening. Would you like to speak to us this evening?
Hello.
All right. Very good. Uh, having said hello, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Thank you. Uh, moving on to old business. First is the affordable housing update. I did not have Darlene come this evening because there was no reason to do that. We do have a mediation date which has been set for November sixth. Darlene and Albert Cruz will be attending that and they are preparing documents for that mediation date. Um, both are uh, what are they calling it this time? The adjudicator? Um, and our um judge have been sent.
Who are we mediating with? I'm sorry.
These are, these are, this, this is with fair, this is the fair, this is, no, this is the fair hair, fair share housing, which um objected to our plan and a hundred and twenty some other odd plans in the state. So out of a hundred and forty-four odd more or less plans that were submitted in the state, fair housing objected to over a hundred and twenty of them. And we are one of them. So um, so they are going to mediation on November sixth. Uh, the adjudicator is um, and I'm going to bundle his name Frank Spanish, uh, who was our special master, I believe, in the last round. Um, and worked with Betsy.
What's the special?
Well, the special master is what they called it last time. This time they call it an adjudicator. As far as I can tell.
Of the Fisher Housing's complaint or that we didn't have enough units, but we had enough units. Is it like patient?
Darlene said at last meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, if, yeah, it was um, she gave a really good overview of it and I won't attempt to uh capsulate that, but basically um, they're rejecting pretty much everyone's arguments on everything.
Okay.
How's that for um, a summary?
It was like vacant land adjustments and a few.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We don't, we don't want to get too far in nitty gritty of discussions about pending litigation unless you go into inside precautions.
So it was, they objected, we're going to mediation. Along with a hundred and twenty other odd some municipalities. Um, so that's the affordable housing update. Um, Brad, do you know anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, the uh age friendly French Town, uh, which is a community committee now, but Jean's gonna give us a very, very brief update.
Very brief. Um, so as you will recall, this first half of the year, we're focused on listening um to the community about eh age friendly issues and that's included a really good mayor's town hall, right?
Yeah, it went really well.
Forty people or so turnout. Um, and then the committee is interviewing, doing like one-on-one interviews with about fifteen community leaders that work with the aging community on a regular basis. And then we've launched a community survey this week. Um, which is on the website. Brad's gonna send an email out. There's a flyer about the community survey. Um, and then there'll be a mailer and then the committee will be um creating a list of um seniors for us to reach out to, to help them um fill out the surveys, even if that means hard copies. Um, and then come the new year, we will start to be able to report out on what we hear are the big challenges and what the opportunities for action are. So stay tuned for that.
Very good. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about that committee? It really is going along quite swimmingly.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Impressive.
Turn of effort. Yeah, it was a really good meeting. It was a great meeting. People positive and constructive.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think, I think this is, I think both the me, the committee is going very well, but I think it's, but the work of the committee is being received very well by the community, which is, which is nice as well.
Yeah. Agreed.
Um. All right, moving on to numbers. escrow fee update. Um, I'm going to actually look to Ted and Sam to help us with this because they were the ones that did some number crunching.
I think it was mostly Sam. I did, you know, send a a spreadsheet, some additional columns, but I think the actual work of ours.
So SPG proposed, that what's your middle?
No, that's
That's me.
That's your turn.
Oh, okay.
Um.
No, Steve Gruber, not Sam Gravel. There we go.
No, I am.
Yeah, our comments were just um kind of a, an idea of what you might want to consider uh it sort of an average of all the others. Um, some of them I don't even think you, you may necessarily need to do like a request for extension of approvals. Some municipalities do have a charge for an uh extension of approvals. Um, some don't, but we, these are just numbers that we came up with that are kind of uh what we experienced in other municipalities. And they're higher than what we have and lower than some uh other municipalities. Just food for thought.
Yeah, no, we had, we had asked if everyone recalls at our last meeting, um, not only was um uh they're gonna be some number crunching in-house, but we had actually asked our professionals to come up with some numbers as well because they have a better sense of um, what tends to get built for these things. Um, you know, uh, Sam knows what she sees with bills coming in, but um our professionals see this kind of uh work all the time and they have a pretty good idea of how much these things might cost. And I'm, I'm looking down at Steve's recommendations. And um, although a few of them are a little bit higher than what, than what Sam had proposed, which is the French Town proposed column. Um, I don't think any of them are out of line with other municipalities nearby. And as we noted at our last planning board meeting and possibly the one before that, um, some of these other municipalities, and I had it marked on a different sheet, but not this one. They're looking to see what we do because they're looking to raise their fees as well. So some of these are already the municipalities, some of our neighboring municipalities already know that their fees are low.
Just a quick question on the request for extension. So we don't have that currently as a fee, right?
Correct.
So that would be a new fee.
Correct.
In terms of process, does this board act on this or is the council acting?
We would make a recommendation to change the ordinance to reflect this and then council would have to adopt it.
Okay.
Correct. And just another question on the variance, conditional use variance, is that new or is that, I know we do those, but I'm not seeing that on the additional columns.
I'm not sure whether the use variance is listed in the column as an application fee for a use variance. That's generally meant that's a D variance. Um, the conditional use variance is a type of use variance. It's a little bit different because what's called the D three. Um, the, um, the proposal is for forty-five hundred dollars for the use variance. If you're gonna do that, maybe a conditional use would be three thousand.
Okay, so you're saying it's a little bit of less, but okay, I understand.
But that's also just an escrow fees.
It is an escrow.
Yeah.
The application fees, just in case this hasn't been discussed, go to um offset the municipality's cost for the administration of applications and to pay Sam's salary and and that type of thing. Those are non-refundable and they're a set fee. Escrow fees are essentially deposits towards the professionals review of the court of um the application and attendance at meetings uh and that type of thing for preparation of reports, preparation of the more moralizing resolution. Um, the problem that many applicants have is that when they file an application, if your fees, your escrow fees are artificially low, they expect, oh, this is only gonna cost me five hundred bucks to have these professionals review it. And then within a couple of weeks, she's probably having to make a request for additional escrow. Um, they're still probably low, but you don't want to make them too high because that would scare people from doing development. At the same time, you don't want to make it too low because it um, it's artificial and they're, they don't know what they're getting themselves into. So it's kind of a balance.
Is getting to the point.
Escrows are, are, it's a deposit. So if they don't use the entirety of the escrow, they get whatever's left back. It's kind of like a retainer. But um oftentimes, you have to ask them to replenish the escrow in order for an application to continue to be heard.
John, you had something?
No, I was just thinking that in our town, it's mostly residential, right? Steve, I mean,
Correct.
commercially this, we're pretty, we're, we're pretty stocked up. So, you know, does this keep somebody from wanting to put an addition on their house? Because our, our, our town is pretty non-compliant with our zoning code. So if you want to do anything, even match your neighbor's um house or garage or setback or whatever, you know, you're gonna be brought in. And it's just, it's just a thought. I don't have a great idea on how to fix it. Or if there is a fix, but you know, you look at somebody who wants to put an addition on their house and you know, they have a use variance. Well, they don't have a use variance, but they may have some kind of a variance. They're gonna, it's, it's gonna turn into a lot of money.
Let's go off a little bit with the age friendly committee in terms of like, you know, with older homes like ours is needing a first floor bathroom, right? Or needing to put in a little bump out to have a first floor bedroom.
Right.
But it, but I think the point being is that if we put this, if we put this at five hundred and then Sam has to go back to them for three times to get the money, then they think that they can get through the variance process
Right.
without
Yeah.
uh it cheaply. And then they wind up, they enter the process thinking, well, I can get a variance, you know, with between the fee and the, and the escrow. I can, I can do this for eight hundred dollars. But their variance is complicated and they wind up with a flood situation and we have to have engineers. And then they wind up halfway through the process and it's costing them a lot more than they think. So I think this is I, I agree with you on the one hand, but on the other hand, I don't want people to start into a variance application and then um, because I think we had one of these recently where someone thought that it wasn't gonna cost them that much, but it turned out there were a lot of professionals that were involved and it cost them a lot more than they thought it was going to. And that that put them in a different kind of underlative situation. So I think to that point, keeping the application fees in a reasonable place. Um, possibly a little on the modest side, but having the escrow fees being as honest as we can make them so that if it turns out to be a very simple variance and there aren't a lot of professionals involved, well, then they get the money back. Um, as opposed to getting into the situation where what do you mean? I gotta come back before the planning board again because I wasn't ready and we have to run it past this and it's gonna cost me more money. Um, cuz, cuz I think that's that's actually really unfair, I think, to applicants.
If you take a look at like your bulk variance escrow, it's, right now, it's uh seven hundred and fifty dollars per variance requested. So if somebody comes in uh with an application for one variance and it has to be reviewed by um all three of your professionals, seven hundred and fifty dollars doesn't go a long way to cover that type of C variance. If they had five variances and it's seven hundred and fifty, that actually is more in line of what it, if you do it, the five times seven fifty, then you're, you're getting a little bit more realistic. That's why we suggested bumping that up to a thousand dollars per variance. Um, and I, I think Sam actually made twelve hundred, which that probably makes sense too. But if you if somebody wants to put a pool in and it's in their side yard and rear yard in the corner, that is, you know, two thousand dollars or twenty-four hundred dollars.
And they're in previous, and they have impervious coverage problems.
Right, so that's another thousand dollars on top of it. So it really is a balance, but I don't think you want to make it artificially low so that people know what they're getting into.
Um, I think just for me, putting in new fees, not a big fan. If I get the updates and adjusting our fees to be more in line with what the call structures are, but like an extension of approval, a hundred bucks. We get a lot of those through here.
We do.
Homeowners, I, I wouldn't be charging people a hundred dollars. A lot of times they're just trying to figure out.
What they're doing.
Look at Holly Lowe's application that took shooting the hundred bucks every time.
And they don't have to, do they have to pay to go to technical review committee?
No, not unless professionals are involved.
Exactly.
So if the technical review is just members of the planning board and, and technical review is never binding. So if it's just members of the planning board, no. But if they want a technical review, it's a little bit more meat to it. And we've had that, certainly the
Yeah.
uh, development on Upper Eighth Street.
Yeah.
When that went in, they had a technical review and they requested
Right.
having um uh, a certainly a planner there. I don't remember if we had an attorney as well. But you know, so they can request for that, which point it's gonna cost them money. Um, but you know, a base technical review where a couple of people in the planning board get together and that does not cost them anything.
I, I would agree with you as well in terms of an application fee for a request for an extension of an approval. I, I don't know if that's necessary. I've seen it in other municipalities, which is why we put it on there. And the concern about an, an escrow for the request for an extension of approval, I don't even think you necessarily need that either because if they need to extend their approval, that means there's an existing escrow account that you can ask for the replenishment at that time in order to be heard rather than having a set amount that needs to be.
Right, right.
So I, I, I agree with you, but just wanted to, we have seen that in other towns.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with these other new fees, particularly the certification of a, of a pre-existing non-con, well, non-conforming use. I would say it was a non-conforming uh condition, but um.
And the informal concept plan of the two hundred and fifty dollar for the
Yeah.
So if they're not asking professionals, then if they meet with the subcommittee, they have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars? Is that what that means?
No, and if they're going to file an application before the board for a concept plan review.
We have had that occasionally.
It would, that's usually what uh it's provided for under the MLUL.
Okay.
That prior, if it doesn't involve a use variance, a developer can come before the board on an informal plan saying this, we're planning on filing this. What do you think? Do you, you have any comments on it before we file? And usually it's a, a smaller, shorter application, but it requires some type of application fee you wish.
I mean, but at that point, usually when they come before us for an informal concept plan, it's usually just getting feedback from the board. It's not actually getting any feedback from our professionals, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
I guess if they're sitting here, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess maybe that one makes sense. But I, I, I understand Brad. I mean, I would, I would defer to Brad on this if he wants to just give him the
Well, I think it would just need to be clearly defined so that we know how to administer it.
Yeah, well, administer it and, and it doesn't look like we're just adding
Yeah.
These. Um, cuz I, I think I can only remember a couple of times that we've had an informal concept plan. Like I'm, like three in twenty years. So that doesn't happen very often. Um, but I can think offhand, I can think of at least two. So um, I don't know. Um, in general, I'm, I'm good with this. We do have uh on this separate am I on the
Yeah, it's the only one.
No, okay. Um, so and, and, and just to be brave, Darlene. So Darlene has had some suggestions as well. Um, for the escrow fees. Um, and uh she's bumped them up even more. So for minor site plan, minor site plan. Minor site, well, three thousand. She said twenty-five hundred, so that's in line. Uh, preliminary site plan. Uh, Steve said two thousand plus fifty per blah, blah, blah. She said four thousand.
Wow, for, for minor.
For preliminary site plan. So she said twenty-five hundred for minor. Four thousand for preliminary site plan. And two thousand for final. And
Two thousand for final.
Two thousand for final and for minor subdivision down below. She said the same thing as Steve. She said a thousand. So those are just a couple of other numbers to um we're pretty consistent. Yeah.
We didn't even vote.
Um, I think we should be cognizant of our neighbors. I get, they get the money back, but if people see really high fees as opposed to their neighbors, it could scare people off.
Yeah, I see.
One earlier.
Yeah, four thousand matches with Franklin Township, um, which isn't quite a neighbor of ours. It's off a bit.
Milford said they were trying to increase their fees. Alexandria said they wanted to increase their fees. Holland also said they were looking to increase their fees. So we're just unfortunately
to start. And sometimes it's generally because of other towns are finding that they haven't done that in a while.
Yeah, and it's the same. The secretaries are constantly reaching out for
Right, okay.
Unrealistic for the applicant.
Right, well, it's unrealistic for the applicant. And quite frankly, it's a waste of, of, of our office staff's time to constantly be chasing after people because that um, I think it's safe to say and is based on conversation we've had with Brenda over the years that um uh, it usually takes several phone calls
Multiple letters.
To get those escrows re-done. And then we also wind up with situations where people are coming before us. If their escrow is not paid up,
Yeah.
we can't hear an application and then they're, you know, coming in at four o'clock in the afternoon with a check and it gets peculiar.
So it sounds like it's probably safe to assume that if we do go with these higher numbers that uh, that the towns around us will probably catch up.
They will probably follow.
So it doesn't seem like we're taking on too much risk, right?
Yeah, I don't know how the two thousand, you know, if I'm looking at the preliminary site plan, which is really the only one that was, it was particularly off from Steve's recommendations. Um, but Steve also had the plus fifty dollars for one thousand square feet of lot area, blah, blah, blah. Um, you know, it might just be simpler to just call that three thousand. You know, sort of split the difference.
Hmm, good.
Um, and again, these are escrows, so they would get this back. And this is, this is not for um.
That's not generating revenue for the
It's not generating revenue. You know, it's, it's, it's paying the bills that come in and it's saving our office staff and the applicant, the hassle of having to re-up the escrow over and over again. Um, and you know, that and the fact that as Ted said and Sam said, we do sort of anticipate that once we raise these, that the neighboring municipalities may take them
Yeah.
you know, months or years, but they're looking to also up them. Because I know that this was, this was something that, that drove um um, Brenda to distraction when she was our, our clerk. And um, Sam has quickly picked up on
So Randy, ideally, when do you feel like you want to have the board take an action on this?
I think we could take an action on this this evening if the board was willing. At which point we would make a recommendation that um the ordinance, the standing, a, a, a version of the standing ordinance be amended to reflect these fees and then recommended then to go to council for their consideration. Is that how this happens? So you know, kind of trying to say, you know, he could have said that and probably said it better, but you know, I'm pretty sure that's how that works.
So we'd be going with the SPG proposed with a couple of changes, elimination of the uh hundred bucks for the extension of approvals. And then also, was it the um, there's one other one you were gonna take?
The escrow for the request for extension of approval.
Extension of approvals.
Yeah, and then you would change uh, under preliminary site plan and final site plan, if you're going to make that a flat
Three thousand.
You might want to consider what Darlene indicated. The reason why we had the calculation there is because that generally deals with how intense a project it is.
Yeah.
It's a larger project, they would have more involved in it. That's why the escrow would be higher. But if you want to keep it a flat fee for either preliminary or final, again, it is just an escrow deposit, so that might make sense to it.
I, I'm happy to make the motion if Steve would summarize it with those adjustments of Brad.
I just need the numbers for preliminary and final.
I think the preliminary was, we were gonna go with three thousand if that's acceptable to everyone.
Do we want to do three thousand plus the
Three thousand plus fifty dollars?
Right.
For one thousand?
That makes sense, right?
Yes.
How do we get to three thousand? I thought we're
That was Darlene.
SB, how we're going with Darlene.
Well, Darlene had said four thousand, so we came down a little bit um, from Darlene's four thousand for preliminary site plans. We, we bumped that down a little bit. We're, we're gonna go with three, three thousand plus fifty.
Was she four thousand flat and
She was four thousand flat.
And Steve has the calculus.
But she was jotting it down at the end of the meeting.
She was.
She wasn't about to go into the details of.
Okay.
Um, so three thousand plus fifty per one thousand square feet, et cetera.
Okay.
Uh, final site plan. Darlene had recommended two thousand. And we could go with two thousand plus thirty per square feet, or we could split the difference and go fifteen hundred plus thirty per square feet. Et cetera.
While the other ones are already at two thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, I would actually go two thousand.
All right, two, so two thousand on that plus the thirty dollars per one thousand square feet. Do we want to stay with the certification of the pre-existing non-conforming use at one thousand at the top of the page? I'm not sure we discussed that. The very top thing. That's not a fee we've ever had. And this is escrow, it's an escrow, it's not a fee.
But you do have it, we added an application fee on the first page of three hundred dollars for the certification of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
So we can leave that as a do we want to leave that in?
I mean, it takes effort, right?
It does, it does.
And you're leaving in the informal concept plan, application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars?
I think so, yes.
So if you were, the board was so inclined, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to refer the proposed uh revision to the application and escrow fees or uh to the borough council for consideration of an ordinance amendment to adopt them as we just discussed.
I'll make that up soon.
Thank you, Jean. And who just seconded? Ted seconded that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, could we have a vote, please?
Wire?
Yes.
Burr?
Yeah.
Meyer?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Denblyer?
Yes.
Echo?
Yes. Uh, sign committee update. I confess that I have dropped the ball on that, but I've got at least one of the sign committee people here tonight, so Jean and I will um
Hey, am I on that way?
Yeah, you volunteer. Yeah, you volunteered, Jean.
Okay. No, I'm happy.
Um, you're volunteers. Uh, huh?
Uh, Tomco's on the committee.
Paul's on the, but he's not here this evening. So if you will stay for a few minutes afterwards, I'm gonna compare calendars and see if we can come up with some dates that we can suggest to um, Paul when he gets back from his conference. Um, because we do need to get moving on that. Uh, nothing else in old business? Uh, moving on to new business. I don't think we have any. So no new business. Moving on to vouchers.
I'll move payment of vouchers.
One second.
Very good. Thank you for that. Is there any discussion on vouchers? Hearing none, could I have a vote, please?
Wire?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Denblyer?
Yes.
Echo?
Yes. Uh, moving on to correspondence, council representative report and other related items, including a report from the environmental commission. Um, I had just a couple of things. I have um uh, started, I've got a couple of folks um that I'm interviewing for the alternate position um so that we um can finally fill the alternate position. I also sort of dropped the ball on that this year when I was dealing with my brother's situation. So um, well, that, that's, that's in motion and I should have um someone soon to recommend to council.
We have one or two.
We're down one right now. We're down one alternate at the moment. Um, so we'll get that done. Um, there was a uh, really good meeting actually on October eighth uh about the Thompson track. Did you want to talk about that, Brad, the Thompson track meeting?
Sure. So we had hired a landscape architect through Colliers Engineering that worked with the subcommittee to put together a concept review. That worked with the subcommittee to put together a concept review. So it's really a visioning document, it was presented publicly to get the conversation started. There'll be a a mailer going out, we gotta work on that, getting that out. Uh, we're gonna collect comments from now, the entity are on that plan. But ultimately, because it was purchased with public dollars, there needs to be a public access component to this property. Some folks would like an extension of their backyard or or no activity at all, but we're gonna have to have a public access of some sort. Um, I thought the concept plan was good, it's it's pretty ambitious. Um. To that extent, I think limited resources will have to be scaled back, you know, quite a bit.
It is mostly trails.
But it's mostly.
It is mostly trails.
But um. There'll be, but the good thing was they they kind of focused on how to make it uh more accessible for folks with disabilities as well, which I thought was a good component. Um, there's some back and forth about a lookout area that they wanted to create, whether or not that's desirable or not. Uh, they want to have some mountain biking component to it, at least in part of the area. So it'll be interesting to hear what the conversation's like, but I thought the um. The gentleman that came out that did the landscape architect, yeah, Chris did a really good job.
He did a fabulous job.
Really good, so it's having a conversation, you know, he didn't take a position on anything, it was more just to, hey. We started with something. No one has a right or wrong position here, let's just see where the community's at and try and. Go from there, but you know, I think everyone wants to be sensitive to neighbors, um. But ultimately, you know, there is gonna be a. I think it's pretty essential everyone understands there is a public access component to this, that we can't just shut it down. Um. So if people want to go on there, it is paid for with public dollars, so we have to really stress that and emphasize that with. The whole of Frenchtown.
This is, this is public open space.
Yes.
Is that gonna be in the mailer emphasized or?
I'm going to emphasize in the cover letter, because I think it's important for folks to understand, and I think. Some feel it's just conservation only, but that that's a component of it, but there is a public access component to it.
And just uh remember, Brad, too, that we have the Rutgers. Water resource extension folks who are happy to look at the plan at the point where you think it's ready. Cause they can look at it in terms of stormwater implications, so Darlene thought it was too early. Um, but they can do that for no fee.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And also assess whether there's gonna be a need for any kind of um. Like stormwater permits, which hopefully they won't be.
Hopefully not, yeah, I think it just depends on how.
I think the the overall disturbance, I think, is gonna be really very minimal. I think that probably the the biggest. Proposed disturbance would be to create a some sort of a handicap spot.
Right.
Um, so there would be access. To the meadow, um, so that. You know. That that property has several natural access points, um, several of which come off of. Creek Road. Um, no one. No one who is even minorly disabled is gonna be going up off of Creek Road onto that part because it's quite steep.
Right.
Um, so really, there's only one. More or less obvious.
Yeah.
Spot for someone with with any sort of dis- disability to access it, and that's gonna be um up off of. Ward Hilltop.
There seems to be a general consensus forming around some type of connectivity between Borough Park and that land. That was my takeaway of the conversation.
Which is really the modern. Concept of how parks should be organized.
The connectivity among the land.
Connectivity, absolutely, so.
The other trails, the upper trails that that. Again, that was a little more pushback on creation trails in the upper portion of the property. And then uh. You know, that was interesting, the the lookout thing, I think unfortunately, one of the things that. Chris said, which I wish he did not at that meeting, was that we were looking at maybe, you know, you could have a wedding area when the town can make. Revenue, we never asked for that and. That that took on.
All the residents to think like.
And to be clear.
That took on some errors.
Clear, the subcommittee never said that either.
Oh, you can't say stuff like that, but. Um, we walked that back, so.
But I guess a lot of the municipalities, he really did a fabulous job, he's with Colliers Engineering, um. But one of the um, you know, he he felt compelled to mention it because a lot of municipalities that he works with, they're always trying to look for ways to. You know, monetize something and, you know. I've never heard any idea in Frenchtown that anybody wanted to try to. Make money off of that, we just wanted to preserve it, not have giant condos up on the hillside over the. Creek. So um. I I think it's gonna be very exciting and I think the trails are gonna be very good, um. Uh. And, you know, having walked that now, um, there are some. There's some really quality habitat up in there, it's it's really, it's really very interesting. Um, and there's some invasive species that are that are doing horrible things in part of it as well, but. It's the area we live in, you know, um, that will need to be managed as well, but anyhow.
Right, the terrain there, I think, is it, is it like a valley there or is it?
Well, so you you come in off the top of Hilltop and um. And Ward, and there is, there is a a reasonably flat, big, open space that was used for farmland for a while, um, it hasn't been for many years.
No.
But it's um. It's a reasonably healthy. Meadow, it is not, you know, what people picture of a meadow, this does not look like Heidi's Alpine Meadow, you know, it's, but there. A lot of native species in there, it's actually surprisingly healthy looking, given um the amount of invasive species we have in our area. Um, and then it immediately starts dropping off, there's a lot of steep slope. On that property, um, there's a C one stream tributary, unnamed tributary that cuts through it that goes down to. Um, Nishasackway Creek.
Hmm.
Um. So it's um. There's, there's, there's good space for hiking trails, there are some challenging areas um due to the slope. Um, for hiking, but it's a. There's some really interesting plant species in there and there are documented. Uh, breeding um populations of birds that are not very common. Um, in New Jersey that actually breed on that property, um, so it's, it's a really interesting property, I'm so glad that the borough was able to preserve it.
And the lookout area, I think there's, there's some middle ground there, I think that meadow, that sunrise shot that you guys got was very nice, so.
Yeah, and that was.
I get if it's on like a deck platform or whatever it was designed, but.
That was not posed, that was not posed, that was just the guy which was not Steve Cannon, or Chris Cannon, who was there with us that day, we had no idea he was doing that, we were just walking out into the meadow. Um, to see, and he just took a shot of us in the back and the sun's going down and it was, it was beautiful.
Hmm.
It really is a. It's a beautiful spot. Um. So it's um. And I'm personally very excited to see what where the, what kind of trails we get in there and to see um some access.
Hmm.
To that site.
Sounds like a great spot for a new police headquarters.
They have to do diversion.
Um. Um, well, that's, that's, that's all I had, and I threw most of it at at Brad, what have you got, Brad, anything else?
Uh, last night, the. Borough got a sixty five thousand dollar grant towards Borough Park, so that'll be used for um. Is approved to be used towards the mats for the swing sets, the anti-erosion mats. Um, that we couldn't afford this most recent time, uh, to also put in some more equipment for younger kids. And then. Put towards uh creation of a small pocket skate park within Borough Park. So um.
Down the far end?
Where the ice rink used to be, somewhere in that.
Oh, okay.
You know, vicinity.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that alone will not cover everything, so as I, you know, I think we're gonna have to. You know, manage expectations a little bit because there's gonna have to be some additional fundraising to. To create that, but it will help offset the cost of a pad and putting in a smaller pocket park, but it won't be. As ambitious of a project I think that was initially hoped for across from the school and the field there.
Hmm, did you just finish? On an upgrade recently?
Uh, we did mulching, we're waiting, hopefully next month, the new fitness equipment will be going in.
And that's a different grant?
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah. So we got twenty two. That'll be a hundred and forty thousand dollars in grants.
Wow, that's great. I see that.
Thanks.
And other than that, we're getting close on registration, I think we're down to four property owners now. Now, we're really working hard at trying to, if we get those last four, we'll be able to move forward with the sidewalks.
Well, yeah, if there's something you need to get them to sign, you just need to have somebody show up on Halloween night and see if they're there and just, you know.
Yeah. Um, so a little progress on that, and then the only other thing was um. We. Are not gonna take any ac- action on cannabis this year, so that's, that's done. We'll see what happens in the new year.
And Halloween is coming.
And Halloween's coming, let's.
Parade is Saturday, twenty fifth. And then Halloween, which is the first, quick and true.
Yeah. It's kind of nice when Halloween falls on an actual weekend, it makes it so much easier.
Yeah.
Uh. Vermael, please?
Yeah, um, on the subject of the Thompson tract, the environmental commission did pass, I don't know if I'm gonna get the language right here, pass a resolution. Um, basically saying. Uh, that we should. Do some studying, make sure that we know if there are areas of special environmental in. Interest. Reading ground for birds, et cetera. And if those are found. That appropriate consideration is given to them during any development. Um, basically that. We should actually go and make sure that we're not gonna destroy any important habitat. When we build, what we're gonna build. Um, and then. Other thing, which I'm having trouble keeping in my head. Had better. Answer around. Was. And I feel like I've. Maybe asked this before. There's a lack of clarity around. When there's like a major site plan or something, the environmental commission gets to review it. When the town does stuff. There's, there's no. Do we get to see that? Do we get to comment on? Uh, the specific thing that people were asking about was the. You know, Bridge Street revitalization work. Um. Folks were asked.
But that's, that's been in the.
That's, we're not even there yet, I mean.
But 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 that project's been, uh, uh, the tap grant stuff, I mean, that's.
Ten years now.
Yeah, but that's, that. Yeah, I mean, that that has been in the works for.
But the generic question is, does the commission have the jurisdiction to review? Applications or projects that are.
That are borough driven.
Borough as opposed to a private.
If the borough submits an application to this board for a courtesy review.
They never have.
They don't have to, but sometimes the borough would will run something by. Uh, the planning board, but generally the answer is no.
But could the borough? Not come to the planning board, but just go to the environmental commission to ask for input?
The borough doesn't have to.
But it could.
If they wanted to.
Is there a specific issue they're concerned about, Ted? Because we don't get a lot of communication from the environmental commission, other than like, when they're aggravated about something, right? But it's kind of frustrating because like. We don't get a lot of direct feedback and we've invited them to council meetings, so you could bring that back to them if they would like to. Like Barbara's at every one of our meetings, but she only brings up a few things here and there.
That was a thing that was also discussed that.
Yeah.
That we have this mechanism for feedback that we're just not. Uh, using.
Yeah, is there a particular concern? Cause I was, I was, a million years ago, I was on that tap grant committee that.
It was unclear if there was a specific concern, the one thing that I remember being raised was something about trees and pots.
Hmm.
I I don't know if that's even part of the plan or if there's a specific concern around it, I don't want to bring that up, it's like a thing that.
Yeah, we're, so we can't even touch the tap project until we do the sidewalk project.
Okay.
We can't do the sidewalk project until we get a hundred percent buy-in from all the property owners.
Yeah.
Okay, so if someone from the environmental commission were to show up at the next council meeting and say, hey. We're gonna try and be more uh proactive about communication and when you guys are doing things like this, please keep us in the loop. Is that a reasonable?
Yeah, that's fine, I just. We don't have a, so I don't know what the. Totted trees are, but I'm sure, I'm happy to talk to whoever likes to talk, because we haven't even got to the point where we can even. Do a final plan yet.